Okay. Looks like it's four o'clock. So I'm going to call the October 26, 2020 Select Board Meeting to Order. And I'll ask all Select Board members to indicate their presence. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Present.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Present.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Ackerman?
Present.
Myself, Ms. Bates, present.
Okay, thank you, everyone. The consent agenda today reads as minutes to approve the September 13, 2020, September 21, 2020, September 28, 2020, September 28, 2020, Executive Session Number One not to be released. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Move to accept the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I just had a question. Of course, these minutes were-
Could we have a second first?
Second.
Okay, ma'am?
I thought these minutes were amended. So do we need to move to accept with the minutes as amended?
Susan, I think we should do that.
Okay, sure. Move to approve the consent agenda, including minutes as amended.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Will the clerk please? Is there any further discussion?
I just wanted to ask, so I know what I missed. If the comments that came in, if Jeremy could send them to me, that whatever changes were made in this last version, so I can know, you know, to look out more carefully for some things.
All right. Are we ready? For the clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay. That's unanimous, and I so declare. The Town Manager's Report, Stephen.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I just want to run through a couple of quick items, and then Chief O'Connor and I will report on the election and things that we're keeping an eye on for that. So just a couple of quick items to tick off here. On Wednesday night, White Pond has a public forum from 6:00 to 8:00 via Zoom about the next round of plans for that. We are also looking at a possible completion date sometime in December of the Cambridge Turnpike. I haven't reported on that in a while, to be honest with you. There's been some issues with some of the improvements that have been made that needed to be fixed. And so that's been something we've been kind of working on. CPW has been working on, but that work has continued. And I think we're pretty close to being, having a project complete, fortunately. Just a reminder that early voting continues through Friday, through the end of Business Days Friday. And if you are in Precinct Duane, just remember that your polling location has changed to the townhouse. And finally, I am pleased to report that we have hired a new Chief Information Officer, Jason Bulger, is going to be our new CIO. Jason is currently the CIO for the town of Tingsborough, where he has been for past five years. Before that, he was the IT Director for the town of Groton as well. So he comes in with a lot of great municipal experience and really blew everybody away throughout the recruitment process with his energy and creativity and thoughtfulness. So as the board knows, this has been something that we've been working on for a while. And so we're pleased to make this announcement. And Jason will start in mid-November. So with that, if there's no questions on those items, I would then turn it over to Chief O'Connor to talk about sort of what we've been looking at for the election. And I think we've been hearing a lot of concerns from the community. We all watch the news. We know there's a lot of, you know, trepidation about what's happening. And we take all of that very seriously. And, you know, I think we are, you know, our sole objective is to make sure we have a free, fair, and safe election day, election process, not only just on that day, but that everything can be done, everything that can be done should be done to help make sure that that happens. So Chief, if you want to give the board a briefing on some of the things we're looking at.
Yeah. Good afternoon. I'm Joe Spohkner, Chief Police here in Concord. And just briefly, I just want to share with the board that I have been listening to our residents about their concerns. I have been monitoring current events. And I just want to assure the board and the community that the police department is in constant daily contact with state, local, and federal partners. And there is currently no information that would lead us to believe that we will have any issues here in Concord. However, out of abundance of caution, we are making sure that we are constantly reassessing our plans. You know, some of the current concerns that are out in the media, in different communities, is people's ability to get to the polls and so forth. So I just, you know, our officers, as all of you know, are at the polls in every election. And we will be there as we are all the time. But if there are individuals in the community that are new to town and find that unexpected, it's not something that's unusual. We'll certainly be monitoring the space where people can support their candidates outside of, you know, so people can have free access to the doors without being harassed or anything like that. And as all of you know on the call, that's not, has not been the Concord way. And we don't expect anything to change in this election. However, we are thinking about those things. The Fire Chief and myself have met with the town clerk and Finance Director, just going over their procedures. And in our procedures, should there be some type of emergency, just to make sure that, you know, people that want to vote will definitely have that opportunity to vote. And we have plans in place should there be some type of disruption. Again, I just want to emphasize, we don't anticipate anything like that happen. But we are discussing different contingencies should there be some type of problem. I'm sure everyone saw on the news the incident that occurred in Boston with the ballot box that people could drop off ballots on Boylston Street in Boston. Now the federal and local authorities are investigating someone that lit a box on fire. We look again at our procedures, and we're going to make sure that there is increased presence around our box here in town, particularly during the off-hours when there is, you know, darkness and it's getting darker and darker earlier, and when there's not staff at the townhouse to make sure that there are no issues there. You know, we're very cognizant that people want to make sure that this is a fair and free election. And we will do our part to uphold our duties out of that. Election night, you know, I don't know when we will know when results come in, but we're certainly, our officers will be present in our business districts to ensure that there's visibility and that property is safe guard should people decide to come out and express themselves. And again, if people do choose at some time, election night or the days or night evenings afterwards, we expect that the Concord way will be the way that things are handled, and people will be respectful of each other. But should that not happen, we certainly will be prepared to handle any situation that could possibly occur. But that's my report. I'm happy to take questions from anyone on the board.
Does anyone have any questions or comments for either Chief O'Connor or Stephen Crane?
Linda, Jane, I wanted to ask Chief O'Connor whether there's any, what the follow-up has been with the multiple sign losses that we've been seeing posted. I know I've been appealed to by various residents who have had their political or personal expression signs taken from their front lawns. And it certainly appears to me to be more than any other political cycle that I know of. And then I have a second question that actually I should have brought up a minute ago for the Town Manager. But let's finish with Chief O'Connor first.
Okay. So we have not had a significant amount of reports of signs being taken. Now, that being said, I have heard from a number of people in the community that are saying that that's happened, that it's in discussion groups and so forth. And, you know, I don't doubt that that is probably accurate. But those reports have not been coming into the police department. I will tell you, if you Google that type of thing, people taking political signs, no matter where you stand on the political spectrum, there have been various news reports that in other communities that that is occurring as well. You know, people, you know, it's so quick to take one of those signs. And, you know, people want to do that. You know, they can maintain their anonymity and get away with that if that is in fact what is occurring. You know, but if people have a sign stolen, we do encourage them to report that to the police department so we can log it and have a better idea of what's occurring. You know, I should mention as well, as we approach Election Day, anyone is at the polls or anywhere in town, and they see something suspicious, to please report that immediately to us, whether it's an emergency 911 or call the business number. People trust their instincts and give us a call so we can respond. And when we're reporting suspicious activity, we ask that people use verbs that they describe what the behavior is and not what the person may look like. We want to know what they are doing.
Any other questions for the chief? I do want to say that I think it was important that you were here today to make these comments, and I do appreciate that. And I do think that in the main, we can count on our Concord citizens to respond respectfully as we go forward through the election as well as post the election. So thank you for being vigilant, and thank you for taking the time to be with us today on this item.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Jane, I think you had a follow-up question for the Town Manager.
I did. Stephen, I wanted to know if, has there been any beginning of a conversation, given the rise in COVID cases throughout the state? I know I had a, I was at a Board of Health meeting, which I'll talk about later on. But it's a little, I know in this family, it's alarming every time we hear the numbers and where they're going. I knock on wood every day that they don't seem to be resonating yet in Concord. But I just wanted to acknowledge that here in the Town Manager's Report.
Yeah, I think in the latest COVID report that we get from DPH, I did distribute that this afternoon. I did think we went into the green from having no color coding on that red, yellow, green map. So even though that is still considered very low risk, it still is a sign that we're now sort of on the map, so to speak. And we talk regularly internally, especially at the SMT level. In fact, we had a conversation at our Monday morning meeting this morning about, you know, we're all watching it. We're all kind of looking for, in fact, maybe two weeks ago, we have APP 64, which governs our employee, our employment policies and how they relate to COVID-19. That APP is specific to COVID-19 and how employees get managed. And we reviewed it to see here, you know, seven or eight months in, does it need to be changed? And we determined that maybe some tweaks, but by and large, it still continues to work for the departments. But I only say that, Jane, to and to the board to let you know that we are actively talking about this, if not daily, multiple times per week, and just looking for signs of where things can go. I mean, the easiest example is we have a library that has reopened. And that's been great. And the community has been very supportive and really enjoyed that. At what point do we feel like we can no longer, we need to go back to curbside? Or at what point do we feel like we need to go back to pushing more employees to work remotely? Right now, a lot of employees show up every day to work. And so these are all, like I said, I can't give you specific answers today. But yes, we are monitoring it. And yes, we are asking, discussing these items very regularly. So when something does change, or when something does need to be changed as a result of the public health data, we'll be ready to make those changes.
Okay, very good. So I think we'll move to the chair's remarks at this point. I'll just comment that we've received a fair number of citizen concerns regarding our next agenda item. And I just want to thank the public for taking the time to express their viewpoints and opinions. So with that, I'm going to move to the continuance of the public hearing application by GJC Brothers, Inc., Doing Business as Concord Gas, at 686 Elm Street, for an off-premise package store liquor license to sell wines and malt beverages only. So do I hear a motion from the clerk?
Move to continue the public hearing for the application by GJC Brothers, Inc., DBA Concord Gas, located at 686 Elm Street, for an off-premise package store liquor license to sell wines and malt beverages only.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay. That was unanimous. So the public hearing is now, continued public hearing is now reopened. So is legal counsel for this application with us again today?
I am.
Welcome back.
Thank you. And Mr. Audi is, I believe, online. I think his tag says iPhone, however. So I believe that's Charlie Audi.
Mr. Audi, are you present?
Yes, I am.
Okay, very good. Glad you could be with us. Do either of you have any additional information to add to this discussion today?
I did want to just make a quick update. There were some questions, I think, left unanswered at the last meeting. And so it mostly involved the zoning board application. And I was a little bit in the dark. And I apologize that I was rushing around with a child in the hospital. So I was not quite with it. The, Mr. Audi had actually made application for a special permit back in 2015. I confirmed with the building commissioner today, with Ray Matty, or Matt, that application was made on February 3, 2015, and a special permit was granted for the conversion of the two repair garage bays and conversion of that into the convenience store. The permit is expired, so we will need to reapply. But it had been granted at that time. It's just been longer than the validity of a special permit without being exercised. So we're prepared to go through that process again to convert the garage bays into, which actually, the other point I wanted to make is those are actually uses not permitted under your zoning bylaw in this zoning district at this time. So, you know, I guess it's a personal opinion. But I'd say the suggested convenience store is a less intensive and maybe a more attractive use in that location than the repair garage. So the car wash remains under the current floor plan, the proposed floor plan. But those two repair garage bays get converted into an upgraded building. And Mr. Audi is looking to put about a quarter million dollars into this renovation. And obviously, we're hoping that you would support this application and help a small business owner upgrade, renovate, and modify the existing use to allow his proposal. The other comment I wanted to make is there seem to be some concerns about traffic, traffic generation in this area. Obviously, maybe less so in COVID times. But typically, at certain hours of the day, Route 2 gets backed up. Obviously, we're not looking to add more traffic to the roadways. But the convenience store, the gas, the location are really all suited for pass-by trips. And I expect you've heard that term before. But we're talking about vehicles that are already on the roadways, not a destination spot. So the destination people are going to your other liquor stores and wine outlets in town and supporting them probably when they're looking for shopping for dinner wine or so forth. The goal here is to provide a greater supply of convenience items, including wine and beer. Again, I won't ramble. We can answer questions that the board or public might have.
Are there any questions from the board members? Ma'am?
I believe this is limited business district number one. And I'm just curious about, you know, the allowed uses there. I hadn't had a chance to pop up in my zoning guide to see, but...
So I do have it. So the allowed, it's interesting because the service station, the gasoline sales, is a permitted use. But I don't know if it's helpful to run down other uses that are allowed or not allowed. But allowed uses include restaurants, outdoor amusement, funeral home.
But clearly, retail is...
Yeah, retail is also not a permitted use. So, you know, here, we're kind of a hybrid of things. I mean, it's not your typical retail. And but we, the permitting is handled through Section 7.1.2 and the special permit provisions that allow the modification of a non-conforming use. So we're getting rid of, the repair garage is also not a permitted use in this district. So, and I did confirm that the same section of the bylaw was used in 2015. That's what I had flagged as being the appropriate permit mechanism. Let's see. We allow boat sales. So the auto service sedation isn't allowed by right use. But auto repair shop is not a permitted use, nor is retail. So it's a, you know, it's a conversion to something that may be closer to something allowed. It had been allowed in the past. I have been, Town Hall was having some trouble pulling up the prior documents. They were getting some corrupted files, but I'm sure we can dig them up. But my approach to re-permitting this would be through the non-conforming provisions of the bylaw.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Other questions from board members? So we'll just comment that, you know, as I look at some of the correspondence that's come in, there's a real concern in terms of the allowing a store in, to have as-you-go liquor, that stores that would allow to pick up liquor as you go that would otherwise be utilized by our youth in town. That was one concern that was expressed. Another concern that was expressed is specifically that that's a, and we talked about this last time in terms of that's a traffic, difficult area already for traffic congestions, and that they were concerned that the transient nature of those people who would stop and make a purchase for liquor and then move on would add, would be irresponsible for us to condone that in terms of the public safety of our citizens. And quite frankly, specifically, the youth and surrounding town youth that might access it as well. I think that the other, if I summarized other concerns that came in, it would relate to just the isolated nature of the area. And while previously, the chief has said that they feel as though they could monitor at that point, monitor that area at this point, I think one of the concerns that was expressed by several people were that the stores in the area that also sell liquor are basically in our three business districts where minors are more likely to be seen by people they know as a deterrent. And so I think that's, there were other helpful comments that were made by people. But I think I've summarized the main categories that I saw. Would anyone like to further comment on that or respond?
I just wanted to offer my agreement with multiple letters that were written. And while I have nothing but positive things to say about the current owner and the convenience of that gas station, which we use all the time, I have not been persuaded that we need another liquor store or wine and malt beverage location there. And having been assured that this was not required to continue or to expand his business, I can only see the exact transient nature of the businesses, i.e., passing by on Route 2 or off of Elm onto Route 2 as being a huge traffic nightmare. And we have unwittingly allowed that to happen in other places to understandably assist our retail businesses. So I am not inclined to support this.
I would just follow up on something you said, Jane, which I want to also underscore. The majority of these comments that came in from individuals were careful to say that they had no animus at all towards the applicant and that in fact, you know, understand him to be a successful businessman in town. So trying to indicate it was not personal, this is more of a public safety issue. Any other comments from anyone?
Yes, Susan?
Yes.
I just wanted to comment on the traffic. And we all know in the high time, Elm Street and Route 2 are backed up. If someone wants to get gas at Concord Gas, when you cross, go from Baker Ave across Route 2, you turn right away from the traffic and then left into the gas station. And I don't think anyone would go out of their way to do that if they're not already going by. So I'm not sure where the transient piece comes into it. And the other point I wanted to make was we have two more licenses like this for beer and wine. Oh, I know what I want to say. The wine store down at Nine Inker Corner, that's pretty isolated. There's Barrow Farm, there's a, you know, a wine store and a couple other stores right next to it. And then across the street is the Garden Center and Dunkin's. And that's pretty much on the fringe of the Concord border and probably more isolated than this location in terms of not being in one of the town centers. So I'm not sure about the difference from that point of view. I just, I think that this is a businessman that's established. And I think that I really, I understand parents' concerns about their children. But my feeling is that Concord children are going to go to another town. They're not going to go to a town where they live. And that's speculation on my part. But I support his application to conduct business and to have a beer and wine sale capability at this site.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Any other comments?
Go ahead, please.
Ma'am?
Yeah, I just wanted to note that I think our goals for a town around businesses are really to create pedestrian-friendly shopping. And this is specifically- And this is specifically, you know, motorist-oriented business. And clearly, you know, when you're purchasing gas, that certainly makes sense. But when we were talking about purchasing beer and wine, I think that up until now, you know, our businesses, while there are some that, you know, are in strip malls that are a little bit more motorist-oriented, they still have multiple stores. There is some opportunity to shop at multiple places on foot between them. And so, you know, I don't see this as in line with basically the, the mode that we're trying to, you know, promote in town of shopping in our village districts. It's, it's really a point off the curve. And what I also see is just establishing this kind of format, convenience store and/or gas station for this kind of purchase. I, I see many other locations that, you know, could be done as well. And I just think as a town that, I mean, not that there are that many licenses available, but there are, there is at least one additional license. I just see, you know, approving this application that that kind of format we would kind of legitimize and, you know, would need to consider those other applications as well. And I think that goes against our goals, a town that has, you know, prohibition on drive-through facilities, on fast food. We clearly are, you know, not trying to promote motorist-centric convenience shopping.
One of the other comments we did hear was setting a not-welcome precedent for potential other locations. And we do have a home rule petition that's going up for additional liquor license, so that's, could be problematic. Susan?
Just want to ask a question about that. The, the home rule petition applies to organizations that have their own events several times a year, and it allows them to get a liquor license without having to come weekly or monthly or however, you know, we're talking about places like the Umbrella or the Concord Players or the museum. Am I correct in that assumption?
That, that was the intention. I'm not sure the language limits it that specifically.
But we have to apply for a certain, we've applied, will apply for a certain number of, of.
Yes, it was six, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So Linda, it just, if, to, this is Stephen, to clarify that question, you know, those licenses would just be issued to those vendors who do a lot of those events, and they would not add to our overall total. And then so if, you know, we do a lot of these for South Box Kitchen, if they decide to get out of the one-day liquor license business, that license just wouldn't float there, being able to be transferred to somebody else, it would, it would no longer exist under the way we have it. And I see Mina has turned off his video here, and he's here as well to help out maybe.
Just very quick clarification on that, Madam Chair and Ms. Bates.
Yes.
Those licenses by statute are the kind of licenses that could not be used for entities that could otherwise be eligible for licenses, meaning package stores or restaurants. That's, that they're sort of a third category. So there is no real risk that those, that the special, the ones in the special legislation could end up somewhere else.
Thank you. Thank you both. Okay. Any other?
Just a response whenever it's appropriate.
Yes, go ahead.
So there's been a suggestion, I think, more than once, and I do appreciate the concern of the board members and the public, that youth or people that might drink and drive are more inclined to do so in a place where they can get gas and grab their six-pack on the way. But I think the chief at the last meeting, and I would agree, that there's really no distinction between the typical, you know, wine and beer or liquor store or a facility like a convenience store where one might be able to pick up a bottle of wine or a six-pack of beer. So I, I wanted to make that comment. Mr. Audi did indicate that he would like to build out this convenience store regardless. But the viability of his business is clearly greater if he's able to have the wine and beer sales. And again, I look at this as supporting a small business person, just like many of your others. Correct, it's not a real pedestrian-focused area, but it is one that's quite distant from the other wine and beer or liquor stores in town. I did have a graphic, I'm not sure it's necessary. I think you all know where the other Acton and Walden Liquors and down by Barrow Farm or, you know, other places you can purchase alcohol. But, you know, this really is something, it won't be a large supply, it will supplement some of the other offerings for people looking to grab, you know, something on the way. But I, I did want to remind you that the chief had indicated that he'd seen no difference in, you know, incidences in one, you know, locations, or he was aware of none, and I am aware of none, where there are greater incidences of either drinking and driving or youth that are purchasing alcohol in convenience stores versus other facilities.
If there are no other comments?
I just want to ask one, one quick question, Linda. Did we receive any letters of support?
Okay. If there's no other discussion, I'll ask the clerk to make a motion.
I move to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. So if there's no further discussion, I'll ask the clerk to provide affirmative motion to accept?
Okay.
To approve the liquor license?
Move to approve the application by GJC Brothers, Inc., DBA Concord Gas, located at 686 Elm Street, for an off-premise package store liquor license to sell wines and malt beverages only, to be valid through December 31, 2020. Ms. Escobedo? Oh, second.
Second, yeah, second.
Ms. Escobedo?
Nay.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Nay.
Ms. Ackerman?
Nay.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Miss, myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
All right. If I heard correctly, that's four opposed and one in favor, and I so declare. Thank you for being here today, and best of luck with the convenience store going forward.
You for your time. Have a good night.
Good night, thank you. Okay, moving to the next agenda item, which is the, to hear about a PACE resolution. And I believe we have Kate Hanley here to introduce this, and.
Excuse me, I think there's the Comcast hearing.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Okay.
And Linda?
Yeah.
I was hoping to flip-flop items seven and eight, because I, Mina has a commitment coming up.
All right. So let me move to the public hearing for an application by Comcast of Massachusetts LLL, Inc. to install new coaxial cable along and across Enersnak Hill Road, College Road, and Strawberry Hill Road. Will the clerk open the public hearing?
Move to open the public hearing for the application by Comcast of Massachusetts, Inc. to install new coaxial cable along and across Enersnak Hill Road, College Road, and Strawberry Hill Road.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Oh, Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, it's unanimous, so the public hearing is open. So is there someone here to represent this request?
I am Greg Franks from Comcast. Good evening.
Welcome. And I see Justin Richardson is here. Are you the one who's going to speak to this today as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So Greg, go ahead.
Thank you. So this is actually all underground construction, and it's to bring internet service or an additional service to the Neshoba Brooks School. So the plan is, just like it says in the plan that we filed, we're going to go from pole 17 on Intersec Hill Road to pole 18 on Strawberry Hill Road.
Okay, you just said it's all underground?
Yeah, maybe I'm, maybe I'm mistaken here. No, I'm mistaken, I'm sorry. Happy to take any questions. We have had an opportunity to meet with engineering, had a chance to review the, the conditions, the proposed conditions, and of course, we're prepared to comply with those.
Okay, Justin, would you like to comment on this application?
Yeah, we did have a number of comments that we sent to Jeremy. We did receive another question from a resident on Enersnak Hill that I'd like to ask related to if there would be any interruption in service when this new line was installed.
No, there, no, there won't be.
Okay, and it's strictly only for the school?
Correct.
Okay. And then we have a series, did, did you receive the letter that we sent related to the conditions from engineering?
Yes.
Okay. Did you have any objection or any comments for that?
I, I have a question. Is, is Comcast currently serving Neshoba Brooks?
Yes, we are.
So this is just an increase in service?
My understanding is it's an ethernet. So it's a closed network, something to boost, probably to boost their internet, but I don't know specifically what they ordered.
So the application talked about overlapping quite a distance over those three streets. And one of the questions that's come to my attention is, is there any increase in terms of disruption of internet service and/or power outages when this kind of overlap is done across these wires?
I can't see how that would be an issue. You know, if a pole comes down, all those wires are coming down with it.
Yeah, Justin?
I have no further questions besides the comments.
Okay. The other question that came to my attention was that.
Linda, sorry, I did check with CMLP on that, and they don't have any concerns with the overlapping.
Okay, good.
They didn't review this, and they, they're okay with it.
Okay, good. And the other question that was brought to my attention had to do with CMLP had not weighed in in terms of the pole. And usually they weigh in on, when poles are involved with the overlapping. So I assume, Justin, you haven't heard anything about additional concerns there?
No, I actually forwarded them the petition with the plans for their review, and they, as Stephen said, they, they had no issues, and they actually walked the site with Comcast just to go through the, the location, so they had.
Very good, thank you. Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, just a question about the traffic situation. I mean, clearly it's a low-traffic street, but what provisions are you going to make, I guess, as you're installing this relative to traffic that's moving around? Will there be any closures or single lane or what happens here?
It's pretty quick work, I think, and it's going to be a small crew. I think we're going to be doing what we normally do unless a police detail is required. Normally, it's, it's not, like you said, for, and I'm familiar with the area, a pretty out-of-the-way area. But if, if a detail is required, certainly we'll, we'll get one. But we're, you know, working in the street is what we do. We, our guys are very well-trained, and, guys and women for that matter. And normally it's, you know, putting, putting cones out and putting themselves in a safe position on the road, that people can get around.
Thank you.
I believe one of engineering conditions was for Comcast to provide a traffic management plan to the police department and the engineering department for, for review, just to make sure everything was stated.
You know, particularly with children in the school buses, right? So that's probably pretty important. Okay, are there any other questions or comments? If not, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Linda, Linda, can you take some public comments?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I can.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. This is Carlin Reed, 83 Wits End. I do live in the area, and the, and I appreciate all the background and the double-checking with the light plant. I think that's really important for this kind of thing. The only question I had that, that has not been answered to this point was what kind of notification will be given to the residents along the Enersnak Hill area about this construction and about the, the work that's being done? How are they going to be notified?
We don't normally, for a project like this where the road isn't going to be closed and traffic is not likely to be impacted and service isn't going to be impacted, wouldn't normally do that unless the town requires it.
A follow-up question. Under the, the order, it looks like some type of notification is supposed to be mailed to the residents seven days before the hearing on this. Was that done? That's in the order, that's in the draft materials.
Hey, Carlin, this is Jeremy. I sent it out on last Friday, so hopefully we've gotten the residents on Monday. I'm not sure if your household was on the, on the butters list that I printed out, but I did send notification for the hearing.
Great, thanks. I'm not in a butter, but I do drive that area, and I do get my services from Comcast through those same lines, I suspect. Thanks much, that's it for the questions.
Okay, good. Any other comments from the public? If not, I'll entertain a motion from the clerk to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
And then if I could hear a motion to approve the application.
Move to approve the application by Comcast of Massachusetts, Inc. to install new coaxial cable along and across Enersnak Hill Road, College Road, and Strawberry Hill Road, with conditions as specified in the memo from Concord Public Works dated September 22, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, that seems to be unanimous, and I so declare. All right, thank, thank you very much for those of you representing this.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on next to the, we're going to switch items numbers seven and eight. And so we'll start with eight, Discussion of the Open Meeting Law Complaint Dated October 8, 2020 Regarding the Transportation Advisory Committee. And Town Council, Mina Macarius, is here to discuss it with us today. Mina?
Thank you. So we've reviewed the complaint that was filed against, it was actually filed against the Transportation Advisory Committee and the town manager for failing to take steps to meet under the open meeting law, for the, the TAC's failing to take steps to meet under the open meeting law. The issue for this particular complaint is whether or not the TAC is subject to the open meeting law. That is, whether it's a public body or whether it is a, like, groups of staff, for instance, is just not subject to the law. We have reviewed it. There is a three-factor test that applies for determining whether a. a body is subject to the open meeting law. We think the TAC is not a public body subject to the open meeting law. It is, one, it is set up entirely to advise the manager on issues that he could take action on by himself. Mainly general policy planning and contractual issues around policy, around transportation, not anything that is necessarily within the board's purview. Sorry, one second. I'm sorry, I have an important request behind me as well. The second factor is whether it was, the committee is created by statute or bylaw. This was created entirely, again, by discretionary act of the town manager and therefore is not, would fall on the side of not a public body. And then finally, this, the, whether the board sort of is the implementing body for the select board, and it's not. The board here encouraged the creation of this body. It suggested, you know, a couple of things it could do, but it did not create it. There is some confusion because the committee charge includes language that the that the TAC should act in accordance with the open meeting law and it that appears to have been, from my understanding, a reference to language in one of the town's administrative policies and procedures that says that all boards and all committees of the town should act in accordance with the open meeting law. And I think that has been understood to mean, in this case, that it, to the extent it could, it should try to meet to the the TAC should post its meeting times, should post its minutes, et cetera, but it's not necessarily required to. My understanding is that the the TAC and the town manager agreed to do that going forward and to the extent that they have meant in the past to make those available. That is not necessarily something that is, again, required, but it makes, may, it may be helpful here. Certainly can have, can meet OML conditions voluntarily. And the reason I think the, I mentioned that this is a group tasked with advising the manager, that the key part that makes this difficult to say that this would be a public body is that I believe a quorum of the group is actually staff. And if you were to apply the open meeting law to it, it would sort of defeat the purpose of it. You either have to take the staff off of the the group because they wouldn't otherwise be able to meet, or you would have to take the residents off of it to who provide the additional input to the group. So our proposal is to respond, saying that although the TAC is not subject to the open meeting law, it will voluntarily comply with some of the key features of it, namely posting meetings and taking and posting minutes.
So comments or questions?
Yeah, a question, which is, given this determination, what is it that the Transportation Advisory Committee could not do? In other words, that would suddenly, you know, make it subject to the open meeting law? I mean, it sounds like the town manager is, you know, quite a lot of purview here in establishing what he has termed a hybrid committee. You know, that includes citizens as well as town staff that, you know, voluntarily can post meetings and minutes. You know, is doing so as a matter of practice now. But I just don't understand, like, I always thought that the open meeting law was pretty crisp in saying, you know, either it's a, you know, a town staff venture in which, of course, it's not subject to open meeting law, or it's a citizen committee, and this is that so called hybrid. I just, I'm trying to think of precedent. I'm trying to think of what, you know, where there's a line that they can't cross or should, you know, stay within.
It's a good question, and I guess I would say a few things. One, I wouldn't, I don't necessarily endorse the idea of it being a hybrid body. That's not really something that that I would use to describe one body or another. It is either subject to the open meeting law or not as a public body. Where the line is, is whether, I mean, one of the, one of the key factors is whether the town manager could do the things the group can do on his own and is simply seeking their advice and input. So for instance, the town manager couldn't appoint a group of staff to lay out streets, right? That's that's within your purview. He couldn't simply have a group of staff and citizens especially to approve the warrant or, you know, do anything like for a town meeting. There's just a bunch of things that will be within somebody else's purview. So that's one limitation on it. So it's less about what the TAC can do and more so about how they're formed and why they're formed. And and at whose impetus they're formed. My understanding is that this was not a select board formed committee. If it was, and maybe I'm misunderstanding that. I'm getting a lot of puzzled faces, so I'd like to hear more because I don't want to be wrong about this. So.
Yeah, just one other question. I mean, could they bring proposals to the select board then that are within our purview? Is that, in other words, that they act as a way to formulate, you know, policy or, you know, proposals that then are brought to us for deliberation and approval?
Yes, to the same extent the town manager could.
Right. It's just that then the question is, is that then work that's all in his purview, or is it preparation work for stuff that's within ours? And does that make any difference?
You're muted.
I'm thinking it through. That's why I was still on mute. I mean, it's a tough question to say within our, in your purview or not on something like that. If it's something that is being brought before you and that's being discussed in an open meeting of your board, you know, I guess it's, there are a lot of things that the manager or staff discuss and recommend to the board. And the fact that they're ultimately within a board's purview doesn't mean that that discussion among staff has to be in in an open meeting. So maybe I'm just, I'm, I, you know, I'm not sure, I guess, Mr. Johnson, that the crispness that you you were saying is in the open meeting law is actually quite there on this particular issue. There's actually a lot of decisions on this because of that. Because because that line is not very fine, especially in towns that have a charter form of government with a town manager as opposed to more select board led towns.
Jane?
Yeah, I think that some of the puzzled looks may be mine in part because the formation of a transportation committee was, fell to, you know, I was, I was the select board member tasked to to oversee that happening, again, coming out of the long range plans, recommendations, just as we did with the Economic Vitality Committee. And and the, what am I trying to think of? There were several committees we formed. And the Capitol, the Capitol Project Committee.
Middle School Building Committee.
Thank you, Susan. And the Middle School Business Building Committee. And I think it was the town manager's experience and and knowledge in transportation that led us sort of down this fine line that I think I was the one that coined the term hybrid. And if I did so erroneously, I, me a couple to all. But I am kind of stuck because, on the one hand, this was very much out of the select board's goals and the goals for previous year that this came into being. I don't think any of us intended to either create a violation of open meeting law nor a nor this level of concern. What we simply wanted to do was take advantage of the expertise that we have in the staff as well as those we have in town, as we have in other, other committees. And put this under the town manager's responsibility. You know, transportation is such a wide category. It's hard to, it's hard to pull policy from management apart.
So I was present on the board when the original draft of the charge came before the select board. And the select board clearly I think clearly contributed to the the nature of the charge and, in fact, struggled, as I recalled, trying to define role responsibilities. And and in fact, the membership was not unlike the two other committees that were just cited that are public committees subject to the open meeting law. So it was, I certainly walked away with that understanding that it was like the other existing committees that had some staff representation as well as citizen representation on it. And that was understanding I walked away with.
So Linda, I think to go back to Mina's point, I think the, one of the things that that makes it a little bit different is, well, first of all, it is a lot of things that could come out of the Transportation Advisory Committee would be some maybe policy recommendations, and I would look to the committee to give me guidance on creating those recommendations. And then the other thing is there may be action items that that town departments take as a result of discussions at at the TAC. Again, those would be things that they would, you know, that we would review, consider, and then the committee would give the town departments through the town manager guidance on it. I think, to go back to Mina's point, if we have a staff meeting about something maybe not even within the the Transportation Advisory Committee's purview that includes the members that are on there, which, you know, could happen from time to time, we would then have an open, potential open meeting law violation just because we're having a staff meeting. And so I think if we were, you know, I think one of the things that that would make this challenging as a public body under meeting laws, I would recommend we'd have to change the composition and kind of lose the benefit of that experience. And so I think that that's, you know, that was, you know, my, one of my primary concerns with all this. But in terms of, the one thing I want to go back to is in terms of, you know, transparency and accessibility of the work of the committee. We are committed to doing that going forward. In fact, we just posted, we're meeting Wednesday afternoon. We just posted that agenda with the Zoom link and we're preparing draft minutes that'll be, you know, considered during that meeting. So I think I don't want to lose sight of the fact that we are doing that in the discussion about the public.
Yep. I'm just in my own, rather than I know it sounds like a direct challenge. That's not my intent. My intent is trying to understand the difference between this committee and two other committees that are clearly public committees in terms of how we've looked at the membership. That's, I'm just, so that I can walk away with a clear understanding going forward. That's, that's what I'm trying to accomplish here. Terry?
I actually have the same question. Because the Capitol Planning Task Force and the Middle School Committee and the Economic Vitality Committee, these were all formed at about the same time as the Transportation Committee. And they're all, maybe hybrid is the wrong word, but they have some staff on them and some citizens on them. For a reason, we wanted both staff and citizens to be on these committees. That was a very conscious decision, but I'm having trouble understanding the distinction as to which ones have to follow the open meeting law and which ones don't.
Go ahead, Mina.
Well, I didn't know, Susan, you wanted to follow up on that first, but.
No, go ahead.
I guess what I, without looking more particularly at the charges for those committees, I'm not sure whether those are public bodies either or not. If I might make a suggestion, and I think the, this was brought as a complaint to the board or to the town in good faith in an attempt to make sure this meeting was, this group was meeting in the proper way. The group is going to continue to meet, but it meets formally as a group in open meetings and to post minutes, et cetera. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the the complainant, the person who filed the complaint, Ms. Galas, is on the line. I would respectfully ask if she's open to it and if the chair would allow her to speak on this to take another two weeks rather than trying to rush a defensive response to explain that why we think this might not be a public body, to see if we can provide a response that takes into into light this conversation and gives us all some sense of, you know, what the interest was of having staff on the committee and whether that can be accommodated under the open meeting law without making the day to day jobs of the staff and their ability to function within Town Hall impossible. You know, the the open meeting law, I think, no one wants it to be a tool for bad governance. We want it to be a tool for good governance. So that would be my recommendation. Obviously, it's up to Ms. Galas to, to, you know, agree to a couple more weeks so we could sort that out. And I guess if there is an upcoming meeting of the TAC, I assume it'll be posted anyway because that was a commitment we were going to make in the response.
There is an upcoming meeting that has been posted. Yep.
This isn't on the agenda, but I would happily amend the agenda included as a discussion point. Can I just make one comment before, I don't know if you're going to invite, on the, on the Middle School Building Committee? I do want to note that that model, that the committee was appointed under, is really a state model set by state statute through the Massachusetts School Building Authority. That's, that's a statewide model for having that blend of of staff and residents on there. So that one I would kind of set aside as something that's that composition is set by its own separate statute, I believe.
That's right. And that is one of the factors. If it's something required by a statute, the fact that it's a high, use the term hybrid only for composition, not that that it's an in between. So I don't think it's an improper term in that sense. That is, that is certainly one of the factors that leans towards it being a public body.
Yep. But, you know, as you've heard, we have at least two other committees that probably, in terms of formation, parallel this in many ways. So probably should take a better look at that, all of them together. I think at this point, is Ms. Galas in the?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Mina, would you file, would you be filing or asking for an extension at this point?
The, the way the open meeting law complaint process works is it's a response initially to the complainant with a copy to the Attorney General's office. So I don't, there's no need for a formal filing of an extension, a simple confirmation from Ms. Galas here, perhaps followed up by an email would be sufficient.
Okay. So would you, yeah, Tonya?
I would, I would prefer, Mina, that you ask for a formal extension. If you need one, that's what I would say.
Just to be clear, I'd be asking it from you, not from any other party.
No, I would not want to grant an extension at this point. I have written zillions of emails, you know, made multiple implorations. Yes, it is, it is filed in good well. I believe, I would have to double check, but I believe that I, I have even noticed in the open meeting law text or in fact, the entire law, I have to double check. I haven't looked at it recently. But I believe when there are committees made up of staff and citizens, then the rules about private meetings with staff no longer apply. I am not sure about this, and I'm not a lawyer. But I have done everything in good well, but I have also spent countless hours on this and and I'm not, I don't mean to be confrontational, but I am quite sure it really is a public body and what I will, and it's not, and it's not, there is no confusion whatsoever. I assure you, based on what the chart says about public meetings. On the contrary, I want to clarify that it is in fact a public body. want to clarify that it is in fact, a public body. And one thing I would say to the select board is that if, if I do bring this up with the attorney general as a follow-up, and the attorney general finds that it is not a public body, or if you go by Mina's assessment that it is not a public body, then I would like you to please take everything that the committee decides as what the town manager decided and what the town manager wanted to bring, what the town, it's that it's a town manager's thing, it's not a public thing. Because that's, that's, that's what the definition is when it is not a public body. So I'm sorry that I would not want to grant an extension myself at this point. But I said all I know and I wrote zillions of letters, it's all there. So, thanks.
Understood. That's certainly within Ms. Galas's right to have us respond by the deadline. So we'll do that. I guess what I was hoping to talk to this group about is to get a better understanding of that, or confirm my understanding of that belief that you did not intend when you created this body to create a public body. And I guess I'm still unclear what the select board intended, which I don't think it actually, what's also unclear is whether the select board actually created this body or not.
If I may say, I'm sorry, one more thing is that, as Mina knows well, I'm sure, and in fact, he said so, I think, I think, I think it's the transportation advisory committee that's supposed to meet to respond to the complaint. But, you know, you do whatever you do and we'll go from there. Thanks.
Mina, is there additional information you need from the select board members at this time?
I don't think so. I mean, I guess that, just, just that last question I asked is, you know, is there, I think I've heard those who were on the, on the board at the time, the recollection of what you thought when you talked about this, whether you were creating it or endorsing it, it was unclear. I do think you're only talking about one body at this time. There's different, three different bodies that have been brought up, but we only have one before us and only one that we have to respond to by this Thursday, about by this Thursday. Just to point out to Ms. Galas's point on this, the reason that the board was asked to look at this, not the TAC, is it was a threshold question of whether the TAC is a public body, which, so that being said, I will have to look at this a little bit more closely. I apologize if this may be a more confused answer than I normally like to give you. So I apologize for that.
Well, this is probably why we're here to begin with. So this is what we're dealing with. So, all right. I think we're going to have to leave it there and you're going to look at it and respond within the deadline. And if we have additional information to get to you, we will get to you ASAP, apparently. That would be helpful, I assume.
Correct. Yeah. And that's for that through the manager, I think will be the easiest.
All right. So I thank the complainant for, you know, good faith effort in terms of trying to clarify this. And we're all trying to, to work this out so that it can be productive for everybody. All right. Thank you, Mina. All right. I think we'll move on now to the former agenda item that would have been the PACE resolution. And I believe Kate Hanley is here to introduce this topic. Kate?
Yes. Hi. Hi, everyone. Kate Hanley, Sustainability Director for the town. Thanks for taking time to consider this PACE resolution. I just wanted to give you a little introduction to PACE. I know you have the resolution and a slide deck in your packet, but I thought I'd just give you an introduction to the program and why I'm hoping that we can opt in. And I also wanted to note that Laine Partridge is here, our town assessor, and Wendy O'Malley from Mass Development to help answer any questions that you may have. But first, just a little intro, PACE, Property Assess Clean Energy. It's a tax-based financing mechanism for energy improvements to commercial buildings. So the state passed enabling legislation in 2016 and then amended it in 2019. And the program itself is run by Mass Development and launched a few months ago. And about 30 municipalities have opted in so far. So I'm hoping that Concord can join those in enabling this program. The way it works is that commercial buildings have access to third-party financing to make energy improvements to their buildings. So things like insulation and HVAC improvements, renewable energy. And the financing is repaid by a betterment assessment on the property's tax bill. So it enables commercial, industrial, multifamily, large buildings to have access to financing on longer terms. And it sticks with the property. So if the owners might think that they aren't going to keep the building for a long term, this is a really good opportunity for them to make those energy improvements. It's particularly, I think, important to Concord because commercial buildings make up 30% of our greenhouse gas emissions. And so reducing emissions in the sector is going to be really key to meeting our climate goals. And for that reason, enacting PACE was one of the implementation steps in our Climate Action and Resilience Plan. So this will, we'll check that box, which would be great. We've also heard from Mass Development that at least one commercial property owner in town is interested in using this program. So there's, there's demand for it. And so the way that, you know, what we would do next is that you, as a select board, sign the resolution to enact PACE. It opts Concord into the program. We've also reviewed the program with town staff, and so there's support there. Mina has also looked at the resolution. So that's been approved by town council. And then once it's signed, we're opted in and the program is administered by Mass Development, who will coordinate with Laine and the assessor's office to set up any of the required logistics to facilitate the program. So I'll stop there and see what questions you have for us.
So Wendy, thank you. Welcome. Are there any questions of Wendy or Kate?
Yeah. I mean, can I just boil this down to, so the property owner more or less finances their improvement via kind of a long-term tax payment? You know, this is sort of, instead of getting a loan, they get money towards this, then they pay back via long-term property tax assessments. Is that the sort of blunt way to put this? So, so this could have budgetary impact, right? Because it adds, it creates a cash flow out of the town coffers to pay for these things or no? So how does that work?
Wendy, do you want to go ahead?
Sure. I can speak to that. So under the statute, this does have to be repaid via a betterment assessment, which under Mass general law has to be billed and collected in the same manner as property taxes as a separate line item. So only if the property owner remits the PACE assessment to the municipality, in this case Concord, would we be asking Concord to then disburse the assessment to Mass Development's paying agent? So Concord would be a pass-through as well as Mass Development to then send the assessment due to the capital provider who funded the project.
Okay. So it's Mass Development that's coming up with the cash?
It's actually a third party who's coming up with it, that the property owner chooses. They are in control of who is funding the project. So they would work with either a bank or a PACE capital provider.
Okay. And so we're just passing all this money through back and forth. And so it's neutral with regards to our budgets and cash flow?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, what's not to like? Why would a town ever turn this down?
Well, that, that's kind of my question. I'm wondering from Laine or Kate or anybody else, is there a lot of staff time going to be involved? Are there any other hidden costs or any other downside that you know of?
I guess I probably can answer that. Yes, I'll need five more staff people, please. No, there's, there's very little to do here. We already have a very similar program with Title V. If you, you can get Title V money to replace the septic system through the health department. It's financed by a bank or other, actually, I think that one is the state. But they sent it to us, we do a betterment, we attach it to the bill, we collect the payment through the tax bill, and then the finance department will make a payment back through the channels to the financer. So it's no, no impact on us at all. And you're totally right. There's no reason not to do this.
Okay. Wow. Is there a residential version of this anywhere? I mean, it's just that it could be helpful to the town, right? 30% is commercial property, 70% is residential.
Residential PACE has not been enabled in Massachusetts yet. It would take a different statute to authorize residential PACE.
But there are states that do have similar programs.
There are other states that have residential PACE enabling legislation.
Yes. I'm jealous.
So Wendy, if I may ask, do we, how many people have already had an opportunity to take advantage of this? Because I saw the technical amendment just went in, in 2019.
So we've been working since we rolled out the program, which was pretty much at the beginning of August. And we have our first project, we think, that will be hopefully closing by the end of the year. If you look at the other states that have enabled PACE and installed and financed projects, Connecticut and Rhode Island being the closest, they have a number of case studies of already installed projects demonstrating the benefits that those, those properties have now brought to their community in terms of both energy and economic development.
Terrific. Thank you.
Linda?
Yes.
I'm on the phone because I got dropped, but I had a question for Wendy. And you may have already answered it when I was offline, but on one of the slides, it says that maximum financing term is 20 years. And then also that the energy cost savings must exceed the cost of the improvements, including any financing costs. And over what timeline does that have to happen, the energy cost savings? Over the 20 years or is it the period of the, you know, is it longer than that?
It would be the term of the financing that they qualify for. And the term of the financing is determined by the useful life of the measures that are in the project. So if a measure has a 20-year useful life, like a solar project would, it would then qualify for that 20-year term. But let's say it was something like lighting that has less than a 20-year term. That's where you would take whatever the useful life is for that equipment and that would be the term allowed.
And the maximum is 20, correct?
The maximum under the statute, yes, is 20.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right. I think we're ready to hear a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay. Move to adopt the resolution authorizing the town of Concord to participate in the Massachusetts Commercial Property Assess Clean Energy Program, parentheses, PACE, Massachusetts, in parentheses.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
And that's unanimous, and I so declare. Can I just ask one question, one more question, Kate, in terms of what is the education plan to educate the community on this?
It's a great question. And that came up in the Climate Action Advisory Board meeting. So I think that's something that I'll discuss with the board and coordinate with CMLP to figure out how we spread the word about the program. But I think also, maybe Wendy can add, if there's additional efforts on Mass Development or the, on the third-party funders in terms of reaching out to properties that might want to take advantage of the program.
Yes. So we are coordinating with the municipalities that have already opted in to develop some language that those municipalities could use on your own websites or marketing materials to describe and introduce the program as an option to your community. We also have existing marketing materials that are just general, that can be used. So I think we're happy to work with the town as they identify ways that they want to market the program. So we're open, but that's some of the effort that we're already working on.
Very good. So we look forward to seeing that information. And thank you, everyone, for being here on this topic today.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
So I think we're now ready for committee nominations.
Okay. Move to nominate Dick Schmidt of 44 Baker Farm Road, excuse me, Dan Schmidt, 44 Baker Farm Road to the Agricultural Committee for a term to expire on April 30th, 2023.
Okay. And committee reappointments?
Move to reapprove Stephen Barrow of 415 Wheeler Road to the Agricultural Committee for a term to expire on April 30th, 2023.
Okay. Reappoint. Yeah. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Susan, are you there?
Susan, you're muted.
I caught, I'm sorry. I switched devices. Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay. And that's unanimous, and I so declare. And thank you to our citizen volunteers for these, willing to step up to these committees. We're ready for committee liaison reports. Who would like to go first? Terry?
Thank you. I just got a battery warning notice, so I'll be quick. The library committee met last week. There was a library groundbreaking held for the expansion project. They purposely kept it very small due to COVID. The construction will take about 15 months and be completed hopefully by December 2021. And the library plans to be open during the entire construction period. The library also reopened for browsing the end of September, and they're averaging 48 people a week at the main branch and 34 people a week at Fowler Branch. You need to reserve an appointment for 45 minutes if you want to browse the library. And the select board is going to be receiving a letter or an email from the library committee on the administrative code. You'll recall when we did the partnership agreement, the library went back and took a look at their administrative code and they're going to be making some minimal changes and sending it to us for discussion and approval.
I think we must have hit that battery.
The battery light wasn't lying.
Probably need to move on to the next.
Okay. Next person? Who would like to go next? Susan?
Okay. I went to the planning board on the 20th and the majority of the meeting was a discussion with the Thoreau Depot Business District and the potential zoning regulations regarding that area. Chris Kutchel from MAPC was there and they talked about a lot of the, the limitation, well, there are two very distinct districts that were not, excuse me, it's one district, but the stores around Thoreau Street, there's an open space requirement that it doesn't seem like they would be able to adhere to. So they're trying to get the regulations and it'll be for this specific business district, but that's a work in progress. But it was a good meeting and they're going to meet again on December 8th to talk about dimensional standards and design guidelines. dimensional standards and design guidelines. Also, the 1440 Main Street Project hearing was continued to November 10th at 7:30. And the Board then talked about their goals, they're developing their goals for this year based on things that were on the list for last year, like the two-family housing, and there'll be some other things, they'll be, they'll be making goals. Board of Assessors met on the 22nd, and they talked about 61 applications, which is forest, 61A farm, and 61B, which is recreation. They mentioned that the lane's probably not on here anymore, it's not for tonight anyway, that they'll be coming to the Select Board soon with classification documentation that's on the verge of being ready. The tax rate is going to be $14.83, and with senior means exemption, it'll be 14.85, So that will be on a future meeting for us. The Council on Aging met on 10/19. They are going to change their meetings to Thursday, which is great because right now they meet the same time the Select Board meets. They have a very successful vaccine, flu shot clinic. It was a drive-through. They also conducted some Zoom training for the staff so that, because of all the Zoom meetings and programs that are happening via Zoom. Ginger Quarles, the director, said that they're starting up a bereavement support group. They're not in the past, but bereavement in COVID times is different, as we all know, from, and they're hoping that a person, that there's a hospice person that will be leading that discussion. The other concern that they have is that they have six tax preparers who help people with their tax forms, and only two of them are willing, because of COVID, only two of them are willing to be in person with clients. So they're trying to figure out how to make tax prep available to the COA members, and that it's a, it's a problem, but they're working on it because they want to be able to offer the service. There were probably, I think, over 100 people that they helped last year. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
So I only attended two meetings last week. I had to miss the Recreation Commission meeting due to a scheduled conflict with the Public Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee. The Public Celebrations and, or Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee fine-tuned the plans for Veterans Day and then also began to plan the calendar for future events, you know, and clearly we have potential impacts on other events for town. So they're really just looking at the timelines for when announcements need to be made and the like. Then for the Community Preservation Committee, the town made its presentations for town-sponsored projects. So we looked at White Pond, we looked at the dredging over Warner Pond and other projects that the town has proposed, like the Chamberlain Park Bridge project. So quite a good set of comments, both from committee members and the public, to just refine those proposals. So we will continue over the next couple of weeks with the interviews with the other projects. So really, we're about one-third of the way through the process. Tomorrow evening is the next, and then two weeks from today, tomorrow is the final tranche.
Matt, if I can just ask you a question about the Public Celebration Ceremonies Committee? Were they able to secure MNN to tape the Veterans Day event?
I believe they did, yeah. So the other thing I wanted to mention was they have gotten a number of proposed members. So we've gotten one green card from the public, but there are also two former members that have suggested they might rejoin. But I guess there was a question about having multiple stints on the Public Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee, because I guess by tradition, they're just one. So what do people feel about that? We're really, you know, the trade-off is between filling all the seats versus, you know, not being able to, but, or filling them with folks that have already served.
So I think the bylaw on this topic says that every effort should be made to find new members, but, you know, when push comes to shove, if they're on, if there's a specific area of expertise or, you know, that it can be considered.
Okay, that's, that was my sense is that there, we have made exceptions even though there's a general, you know, tradition in this.
Yeah. Can I just ask how long, Matt, these openings have been sitting there? Because that'll speak to the difficulty, especially in COVID, of finding.
Yeah, and it's really been through that sort of the COVID period, the new fiscal year. So, you know, terms ended, but they also have a case of a member who has not shown up in two years. So, you know, I believe that there's just a standard procedure there. If members do not appear, that they could be removed. So that, that's another case. So that on the books, there's one more member than there practically is.
Can I just ask, Matt, the people who want to serve again, have they served one term on this committee or two terms or more?
I believe it's one term, though I believe that this committee, I'm trying to think of the length of the term for this committee, is it five years? It may be a long, a long stint.
Because I think our tradition is two terms, and then we look for someone else. Although maybe if it's a longer term, we have a different.
Yeah. I mean, I know, for example, on Planning Board, we typically, unless it was an unexpired term that someone was filling, we wouldn't renew. Yeah.
Yes, Susan?
Matt, I just had a question about if it's a five-year term, I think it would be important to have as full a committee as possible because of that 2025 thing that's coming up. And, and also, if it's a three-year term, I don't know why they couldn't be.
There, yeah, if it's a three-year term, I think that the issue would be that they might have already served twice. Because the question really was, they served their terms, you know, by tradition, and now they're available and willing, but, you know, by tradition, we wouldn't normally have them. So I think I got clear answers on this, so.
Jane, did you want to come in?
I was just going to say, taking this opportunity right now with Matt on the line to avail to the, anybody watching, there are these openings. So if you haven't filled out a green card, no contact.
Hey, and actually, one of the interesting things was that the PCC sees committee charge, no one had a copy. I mean, I guess there's hard copy floating around somewhere, but it's not on the web anywhere. So that would really be helpful. That was trying to confirm the term length. So, you know, I think that should be true of all committees. The charge should be readily visible, especially for new members that are trying to see what they're supposed to be doing.
Yeah. Have you asked Jeremy to track that down?
Not yet, no.
Okay.
Do have the annual report, and it is a five-year term, according to the annual report.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Matt. Who would like to go? Jane?
Sure. I attended three committee meetings, and I'll be brief because I know we've all been on for a while. The Board of Health met on the 20th and discussed, well, first was joined by Concord resident Phil Posner, who was, while he's on the Transportation Advisory Committee, he's also part of Concord Bikes. And so he was discussing the group's efforts to promote fun and safe bicycling in town. It's a very good presentation, and I think that he's, that Concord Bikes has done a lot to work with the students in all three schools, the elementary, the middle, and the high school. And it's, it's really exciting to see all of the, all of the kids they have now have moving safely as groups to, to school when they, when they are actually in session. Also discussed, of course, COVID-19. I think we've, we all know where we are and just watching the updates, but specifically with reference to Halloween. And I know that Town Manager Crane has talked about Halloween multiple times. I know that if, if anything changes in the town's regulations, it will be both news and notices, as well as on the Concord, on the website, webpage. And the, the, Susan Rask has also prepared a pretty good Town of Concord Halloween advisory. And I believe that is on the web, accessible through the front of the webpage, too. So it should walk anybody through what we're doing, what's, what we are suggesting as a safe course of action for next Saturday. There's also a discussion of the Board of Health writing a letter in support of the SAFE Act, which is Safe Action for Public Health Excellence Program, somewhat of a no-brainer, and, and yes, indeed, the Chair, Continuing Chair, Dr. Green, will be writing a letter of support on that. There was also the Climate Action Advisory Committee and the NRC, which, which often meet on the same time and the same day. So I was able to, to watch, to be part of the first piece of CAB, the Climate Action Advisory Board. And they went through the, probably the most active area of their work right now, which is their work with the Rocky Mountain Institute Accelerator. And that's very exciting. In the Accelerator program is fostering progress on building decarbonization. And in partnership with, with RMI, there are a number of opportunities. Alice Kaufman is the lead for the town. Alice is on the Light Plant Board, is the lead for the town on the accelerator, and she often reports on the meetings and the participants in it. The next phase of CAB's work is going to be focused on implementing the plan that they have authored, that was sort of the, the capstone of last year's work. The NRC met also on the 21st, and they went through, they welcomed their new Chair, Commissioner Ed Nardi, Ed Nardi, and went through a number of continuances. And probably the biggest, the new applications that were heard that stood out to me was, were a number of very large tree, tree removal applications, none of which were, were just determined and all of which will be continued. And while I don't know that, I don't know what the case will be going forward, it's clear that this recent storm and all of the trees that came down during that has caused a number of homeowners to think about their, their safety, their property safety, their home safety, and their car's safety. So with that, we also talked about a determination of applicability for the Habitat for Humanity Building 930 Main Street, which I think just wanted to note because that's a really exciting project and another way that Concord's moving forward on its affordable housing and diversity goals. So, and that, with that, I will just sit back.
Okay, thanks, Jane. I think I'm the last one. I conducted the chair's meeting before going to the Emerson Hospital Emergency Room, just before that, managed to get through that. What I commented there was to, to call everyone's attention to this, just recently finalized Select Board goals and ask the committees to look at them as they're finalizing their own work for the year. I also referenced that after the November 3 election, we will have a official town meeting calendar, which should include the town caucus and election dates. As people gave their reports, there were already two potential warrants identified for FY21, and one of them was the Historical Commission is looking at some changes to their demolition bylaw. And the second one, which is really a carryover from the Planning Board, looking at two-family dwellings, they anticipate. So those are the two that I've already heard about, wanted to bring your attention. And that completes my report.
Linda?
Yes.
I apologize, I was supposed to have 16 minutes left, but the battery ran out. But I only had less than one minute to finish my report.
Okay.
So the Capital Planning Task Force met, and there will be a public input, a public forum, where we're seeking public input on December 2nd at 7:30 PM. And finally, I want to ask Jeremy, because Matt and Stephen and I are supposed to be meeting with that subcommittee, and we were talking about Thursday, and I'm wondering, Jeremy, if that got posted yet?
I didn't post it yet. I'm going to post it tomorrow morning.
Okay, super. So we'll be meeting on Thursday. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. Before we adjourn, I just had one more item before we adjourn. And I forgot to mention this in the Town Manager Report, but it's really more germane for the five of you. So Chris and Jeremy will be tomorrow afternoon relocating or moving our offices over to Knox Trail. The start of the first floor project has been pushed back till, I think, the second week of November. But I, we will have access to the suite, I think, throughout, through the duration. We are still sorting, we are still working on mail policies and things like that, but if there's something that needs to be signed or some transfer documents need to be had, either Jeremy or Chris and I will be happy to meet you all where you, where you are to make that happen. Or we can meet here if we, if we need to, but I just want you to know that that's, that process is taking place. We're trying to clear as much out of the way, so when it comes time to do the final move on the first floor, we're, our facilities division's ready to go.
So the move is taking place basically tomorrow and Thursday?
Just for Chris and Jeremy and I.
Wednesday and Thursday, okay. Is that going to disrupt appointments and schedules or?
I honestly don't think people, other than not seeing my cabinet in the background, I don't really think anybody will notice.
Okay. All right, good luck with that.
Thank you.
You'll be over in Knox Trail for approximately how long?
For the duration of the project, six months, probably about six months. But like I said, we have access to the space here, and so, you know, there will be, we have to look at how the construction's going to unfold. And like I said, if we need things here, we can make it happen. So it's like HR is going to, you know, have access to their offices as well. So it's not like a total shutdown of the building. There are days we won't have water and things like that, which is one of the reasons why we're relocating. But we may, we may be able to move back in sooner than that, depending on how construction unfolds.
Okay. Okay. Thanks for that notice.
Sorry about that.
Miscellaneous correspondence, obviously, I mentioned earlier much of what we received related to the agenda item regarding the liquor license, and there was also some additional correspondence regarding Estrobrook Woods complaints. All right. Any public comments? Okay, hearing none and seeing none. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Thank you, everyone, and everyone vote. Okay, good night.
Thank you, bye.
Feel better, Linda.